Back everyone. We're on Article 28.
All right, so these sections are the community preservation articles. I'll just run through them really quick in case there's questions. The first one is simply just the reserves broken into historic community housing, open space. These are the numbers we used last year. Vicki believes they're about the same, so we left them the way they are. It's always get, it's dividing to a third, a third, and third, and then the rest goes into undesignated. The next article is transfer for CPC administrative expenses. They mount $10,000. They generally have this there in case they have to go through doing a study on something, a quick legal costs, et cetera, for any of the projects. Next one is transfer for the veterans' grave markers. This is the amount of $5,000 to the veterans' grave officer to fund the purchase of 10 flat markers for the veterans' grave. That's to come from historical preservation. The next one is Article 31, transfer for restoration of the veterans' monuments to see if the town vote an amount of $2,000 to the veterans' grave officer to fund the restoration of Revolutionary War and Civil War veterans' monuments. That's to come from the historical preservation account. The next one is transfer for Clark Chapman House. This is the amount of $15,000 to the Southampton Historical Society to fund the climate control needs at the historic Clark Chapman House to rectify the flooding in the basement and for a dehumidifier. This is to come from their undesignated account. Charlie's giving me a look.
The building's built in a wetlands. I don't see how the dehumidifier is going to accomplish anything. Just a comment.
I just read the articles on these.
I understand.
The next one is the transfer for historic barn stabilization. This is the one Charlie McDonald from Concom referenced earlier. This is the amount of $20,000 to be used for the stabilization of historic Red Barn on conservation land formerly known, formerly, I'm sorry, formerly owned by the Zipta family. And this is also to come from undesignated. The, if we're all good with those. The last article we have here is Article 34. I didn't really know what category to put this under because it's under many. So I currently have it under the multi, I call it the multi-piece project. Robert, if you have a better category, let me know. This is for the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, we could do that. I'm happy to change that to land acquisition. So this is the Cook County Road Drinking Water and Open Space Protection Project. That's the title they put it under for CPC. This project has multiple facets. I believe there's five sections here. We modeled this article after the Greenway article from 2012. Had a lot of similar components. We made sure we had the correct numbers. We still have a couple pieces we need to insert tomorrow, and we need to get this to bond council for their review and approval. Town council has already looked at it. So the first one is to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds, accept gifts and grants, or borrow the sum of up to $700,000 for the purpose of acquiring for conservation and passive recreation purposes, including without limitation, certain property lot map, known as the Gwinna property, consisting of number of acres, more or less as shown on the assessor's map, 30 parcel 54 through 55. That's part A, which I believe we take each part independently. Correct, Robert? Okay. B, that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $386,862.50 shall be transferred from the Community Preservation Commission surcharges, undesignated, and the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow the sum up to, I'm sorry, to borrow the sum of up to $313,137.50 in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 7 of the General Laws as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefore provided, however, that such funds shall not be transferred, borrowed, and/or expended unless the town is approved for either a land or DWSP grant, as described below, from the Massachusetts Division of Conservation Services and/or any other sources in the amount of $313,137.50, or for reimbursement of a percentage of the purchase price. I did not write this section, so when it seems like legalese our us, it is legalese our us, but that's what town council has used in the past for us, and that's what we generally have used. We will make sure that, again, when we get to the motion section, that we thoroughly explain what we're saying with each of these, each of these components, I think would be very helpful. The third piece says that the town is authorized to acquire the said property by gift, negotiated purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, for conservation and passive recreation purposes, subject to the protections of Article 97 of the amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution. Upon such terms and conditions, as the Conservation Commission, with the approval of the select board, shall determine to be appropriate, and that said interest in said property be conveyed to the town under the provisions of MGL, Chapter 40, Section 8C, as it may here and after be amended, and other Massachusetts statutes relating to conservation, said property to be managed and controlled by the Concom. The fourth section, that the select board and our Conservation Commission is authorized to submit on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from any state and/or federal programs in aid of conservation land or acquisition, including but not limited to, all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under General Laws, Chapter 132A, Section 11, the Local Actions for Natural Land Diversity, the Land Grant Program, and the dwing, that was good, the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant Program, DWSP, and to receive and accept any grants, any such grants, and/or reimbursements for this purpose, and/or grants or reimbursement programs in any way connected with the scope of this article, and that the select board and/or the Conservation Commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute, all agreements and execute, I believe it should say all instruments, including a grant of a perpetual conservation restriction with the city of East Hampton that meets the requirements of General Laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, or to the Commonwealth or to a nonprofit corporation or trust on behalf of the town as may be necessary to effect such, said acquisition or obtain such grant. And the last one. To authorize a Concom, the Board of Selectmen and the town officers to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out the acquisition and grant a perpetual conservation restriction. Are there any questions on that very short article? Do you feel like it missed anything?
I guess I'm a little confused, but I've been there before, so. There is a portion that East Hampton will be contributing, correct?
Yes, but that won't affect our numbers.
It won't affect our numbers, but I think we need to let the public know that we're granting them a conservation restriction.
So it says including a grant of a perpetual conservation restriction with the city of East Hampton that meets the requirements.
Right, but I mean, they should, the town should know that this property is costing us a little over a million dollars, and East Hampton's contributing 300 and something thousand, and that's one of the reasons they're getting the conservation restriction.
So I think what I'm hearing, John, is when we do the motions page and we're adding the notes, that we should add an explanation piece on the note section.
Absolutely. And my other question is, I thought this was contingent upon getting a $400,000 grant, but the way D is written, as I'm reading it, is that we can submit for the grant, but whether we get it or not, we're going to go ahead.
And let's see where it says here in Section B. Such funds shall not be transferred, borrowed, and/or expended unless the town is approved for either a land or drinking water grant.
Okay, but there's no dollar amount on that. Wasn't it $400,000 grant roughly?
So they break it down into both numbers. So the first number is the CPC amount. The second amount that we would need is the $313,137.50. And it says at that point, General Laws is amended, blah, 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 that such funds shall not be transferred. So that's where it goes into that section.
So that takes care of that in. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that article? So that is the last article that I have before we get into the budget.
Any articles you wish to go back on? Do I hear a motion to accept the articles?
So moved.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. More to zero. Okay. I guess we're getting into the...
Budget? Okay, so this actually should be quicker than you might anticipate. So I did print out a summary sheet for folks that gives you the breakdown of what we've done since last Wednesday of any and all changes. So what we have here, we'll go through the pieces. First thing is the revenue section. So in the revenue section, the first thing is new growth. If you remember, last meeting, there was concern about having it currently listed at 180,000. I don't have additional copies of this report. If Jackie wants to hand you Shannon's?
Oh, I can participate. It's an article on the, on the meeting.
They're not on the right side, Robert.
No, 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 no.
That's confidential executive.
You'll be sequestered for six months.
I don't have a mute button here, you know.
Forget about meeting.
Getting loud.
Yeah.
You don't know what you don't want to know.
Okay, so new growth. The change from last time, if you recall, we had originally penciled in as 180,000. The concern from the Board of Assessors is that we wouldn't be able to make it to 110. We did compromise, and we compromised a lot, and we brought the balance down after last night's meeting to 112,500. And the Board of Assessors was okay with the $2,500 increase from their 110 number. So we felt successful in that one. The next thing we decreased from the last meeting was the overlay. If you remember, originally was at 70K. We reduced it to 60,000. School busing revenue, one of the comments from John Fitzpatrick, who's on the school committee at Norris, had stated that he believed we were still collecting school busing revenue from the school choice children. He thought it was in the amount of 10,000. We got verification on that number. It's actually estimated at 8,100, so that is now back in the revenue line. Ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, or as folks know them as ambulance receipts fees. We talked about this earlier, and we had an article on this. We increased it originally last meeting. We walked into the door, I think, at 125 or 142, and we brought it up to 158. Departmental receipts, we increased, so they now total 91,220. These are small things. There are alcohol licenses that we brought up, I think, by like $1,000. We brought up the electrical and plumbing numbers by 500 each, very small numbers. We didn't increase them by $91,000. That's the ultimate total at the end of the day. And licenses and permits, we increased the number on the revenue side to 87,250. So that brings our total FY '17 revenues to 15,633,191. Is there any question on the revenue side of things? Excellent. On the expense reduction side, so we went through a couple of these. A lot of these things ended up being reduced last evening in order to get us to our numbers. So the first one was cemetery commission, the expense line. We reduced by another $1,000, so they're now down to 1,500. Council on Aging Wages was adjusted to reflect only the 2% increase. We had originally reflected a higher number, so the new balance is 23,137.46. The elementary transportation line was, has now been reduced to reflect the bus reduction of FY '16 with the number provided to us and supported by the school committee, which is now 224,421. The highway department from general expenses, we reduced by 25, $2,545, bringing their new total down to 152,301.28. Police department expenses were reduced by $1,000, bringing them down to 54,000. Police department maintenance, maintenance, things, maintenance operating, I don't have the whole title there, I'm sorry, was reduced by $1,000, bringing it down to 24,000. Selectmen minutes account was reduced by $500, bringing it down to 1,500. Selectmen expenses was reduced by $520.70. That was $20.70 more than when we left the meeting, but I realize we were $20.70 off, so I'm very sorry.
So we took the hit.
So that's down to 1,0753.80. Technology equipment and services were each reduced by $1,000, bringing both down to 7,000 apiece. Town administrator administrative expenses was reduced by 750, bringing it down to 1,00635. Town clerk expenses was reduced by 465, bringing it down to 1,000. Town clerk salary and treasurer salary were reduced, as voted on the last Board of Selectmen meeting, to only incorporate the two-on-two and not to include the paycheck from FY '16, so reduces those two numbers to 37,228.63 and 51,981.51. The tree warrant expenses were also reduced, in this case by $2,000, bringing it down to $8,000. Any questions on those adjustments? Excellent. Expenses, where there was fund shifting, so no money change, it just moved from one account line in department to the next. So in the assessor's office, last meeting, you may recall, $2,000 more was needed for the maps. So we reduced the triannual reevaluation number to 10-5, which is the contract amount, and we took that $2,000, stuck it in the maps, so there's now $4,000 as requested. The fire department, the fire chief at the last department, last board meeting, had requested to have his building expenses separated out. So we took from the fire department expenses and created a fire department building expense line in the amount of $12,900, which now reduces the fire department expense line to $22,100. The school department vocational tuition elementary, we've had two shifts, both since yesterday afternoon at noon, which is kind of interesting. So the first shift, we actually had outreach from the school department to Smith Vocational to, in order to determine that they were able to figure out the number of students that were not going to receive admission at this point, potentially more, but the minimum. And we took that number, multiplied it by the tuition rate, and we got the $68,000. So that was the first transfer we did. So as of yesterday at 7 o'clock at night, vocational tuition was down to 951,159, and the elementary school was up to 3,895,064. Well, we encouraged them to check out further based on the number of students who weren't coming. We know that there is a high population of students who have special education assistance in one form or another, but additional funding that goes to Smith Vocational for those purposes. The students aren't going, then the special education funds aren't there as well. They called, and they actually found out that they're modifying how they do their special education calculations next year. So it's based on the services that a child needs and not necessarily on a flat fee. Based on that, the modification off the top of our bill is $57,000, which means we will be moving another 50, I propose that we move $57,000 from the vocational tuition line, dropping it to 894,159, and increasing the elementary school budget to 3,952,064. The only other change that we need to make, and I did not include that in this yet, the finance team and committee did meet, and they did discuss just changing the name of the title of the Board of Health Wage Line to Health Department Wages instead of Health Agent Wages. That was slightly misleading because it's not just an agent, it's a director and an agent, so Health Department Wages. All right. Any thoughts, comments, or concerns? At this point, our expenses are 15,633,191. We're on the penny of expenses and revenues. Does the board wish to approve the budget as is? Does the board wish to make modifications?
I personally can't see any modifications that need to be done, and it looks like you did a great job of balancing it.
We, I do have to give a lot of credit to Vicki and the finance committee because they did a great job last night at the umpteenth hour coming up with creative solutions on transferring funds.
Right. Motion to accept it?
I'll make the motion. We accept it as amended.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? $15 million budget, no discussion?
No, I have, I have the comment. I mean, you know, I understand that we don't have a business community, we don't have any revenues. I mean, it's basically a veteran community, and I get that, but, you know, some of the things have been cut. It's tough for some of the departments, and I find it, I'm uneasy about doing that, but I know that we have to, and I apologize for that, but I know that we do have to balance our budget. And hopefully, next year, it won't be so hard to do. But I do have to say that the finance committee and Heather and, you know, Vicki, they worked really hard. I watched them, and they did a good job, but with a heavy heart, I say aye.
All those in favor?
Well, I just got one comment to make prior to this. This is my first night here. Although I was at the Wednesday night meeting to have an idea of what was going on, I just don't know what we're going to do now that the ambulance second shift wasn't funded, so I know that's going to be a big issue coming up, and I know we're going to have to address that because somehow, somewhere, we are going to have to have coverage for the townspeople. So, but I understand where we are with this budget at this point, and I would be okay with this at this point.
Let's follow up on that if we can, because now's the time, if we're going to, we've got anything that we want to offer, I would think. Because it's a $135,000 question, full second shift, but I believe, going from my memory, it's about $35,000 a year if he keeps going the way he's going by adding incentives to keep people at the station. So there's, it's two questions. Do we want to do anything with either of them? But I think if we don't have something in place, we're going back to where we don't want to be and going back to the six, seven minute wait.
Didn't we just have a fire study of the department and the operations, and didn't the study just recommend with a community compact funded grant to look at all of our options and to stop making decisions before we have a plan in place? Because wasn't the recommendation that the reason we're in the situation we're in today is because when everything was enacted six years ago or more, that there was no plan of how to get there in place? So wasn't the suggestion to stop, figure out what we're doing, come up with an organizational chart, come up with a pay plan, look at the numbers, and move forward from there?
I hear you, Heather. The question on the table is accepting this budget. If I was to throw the thing about the fire department a little bit further, what I'm going to say is, is at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, after town meeting, we're going to have to meet with the fire chief, and we're going to have to start brainstorming a lot of these things, but this is the time to do that. Right now, we're doing the budget, get the budget approved, get that moved.
Yeah, I do think, I mean, what you said, Heather, is 100% correct. I just think, and from talking at last meeting, this process is going to take six to eight months, so like Charlie says, after the town meeting, we got to figure out whatever stopgap we want to figure out, if any, so.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, this isn't the spot right now. All those in favor approving the budget for the town meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. So Carrie, thank you, Heather, for that. I guess we're shifting gears now to Master Plan Committee. We have a request from the chairman, Hank Barton, to add a representative to the Agricultural Commission to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Basically, the master plan does not address or acknowledge the fact that there's an agricultural committee in town, so the idea is to have the selectmen take and add one more slot into the Master Plan Committee so that somebody on the agricultural committee can sit in on that. So entertain a motion.
So moved.
All those, oh, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next thing is appointments. I'd like to pass over the Public Safety Committee appointments tonight, seeing it's getting late.
Isn't that just a matter of quickly going through it?
Well, we're going to have to also take and advertise to get other people to apply.
Right, but if we do this, and then we can ask Heather to go ahead with the next part of the process and maybe even schedule a meeting? And we can't do any of that until this is approved, I believe.
All right. Now I hear a motion to appoint Historical Commission Don Warren, Select Board members John Martin, Charlie Kenecke, Finance Committee Michael Rosenberg, Fire Department John, Chief John Workman, Police Department Marty Cook, to the Public Safety Committee.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor? Do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Aye.
Personnel forms. Heather, you have those?
You have them in your red folder, Charlie.
In my red folder?
Yeah. So you will see that there's a few of them that are crossed off because Finance Committee and/or the process has not completed yet, so the first three, for Jennifer Day, Gaby Corey, and Chapel Delane are, we don't have those yet. They're in the process still.
Okay. Administrative Assistant to the Assessors. Let me do with those. Is that the first one, Heather?
Yes, it's the Gene Risk, all the way down to Rich Paul.
All right, now how do you want these read?
It's totally up to the group. I mean, if the board doesn't believe that they're going to have independent objections to these, I'm okay with putting them all in one piece. If there's any that, I know in the past that the board has believed that they might have reservations on, that I would keep them separate. We can do them each independent, whatever you wish, we can dock it down.
Okay, we have appointments for Gene Risk, Administrative Assistant to the Assessors. Gene Risk, Administrative Assistant to the Assessors. One's emergency, one's temporary. Christine Conrad, I'm going to slaughter this name, Finance.
Finacy.
Finacy, Treasurer Collector Clerk, Emergency Temporary. Jennifer Hamilton, Treasurer Collector Clerk, Separation Employment.
From employment, so that's termination?
Yeah.
Separation of employment.
Joe Slattery, Water Technician, then there's a hyphen, what does that mean?
Sorry?
It says Joe Slattery.
Oh, because it's just a permanent, you'll see all the rest of them have a specific change.
Okay.
Theoretically, it should say new because he was just appointed to that position by the Water Commissioners.
Megan Pike, Probationary Paramedic Pay Increase. Richard Paul, Lieutenant EMS Training Infectious Control Paramedic Firefighter Emergency and Regular. Do I hear a motion to accept the changes?
I'll make a motion because I have a question, but.
I'll second it for discussion.
I'm just looking up at Kristy Conrad-Finacy. She's an emergency temporary? Because the Gene Risk above is emergency one, then a temporary one.
Yeah, so what ends up happening is, the general rule of thumb is, if you need the position to be filled in order to complete with the business and keep, keep from shutting the doors, you hire the person as an emergency, but you simultaneously do a temporary because the emergency gives you two weeks before the temporary should have time to get approved. Gene for the Administrative Assistant to the Assessors, if you recall, the Administrative Assistant has been out for a long period of time, so there was, there was a gap in coverage.
I'm good with Gene Risk. I'm just wondering why Kristy has.
Same thing. The individual in the position of the clerical position had left, and then they were stuck with having all the payroll come in, all of the...
So you just listed Gene and Kristy differently, because Gene has...
I did, I did.
Okay, that's, that's what confused me.
I think I just got tired and stopped listing things twice. I'm sorry.
So that's two of them also, no problem.
Yes.
Okay.
Heather, I'll sign these for you tomorrow or Thursday, just to keep things going tonight. You don't want to track me down, that's easy enough. All right, next thing is contract in place with East Hampton Media? Heather?
I'm sorry, did you guys vote on that one? I didn't have the vote.
No, we didn't yet.
Motion by Marvin, seconded by the group.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? All in favor?
Well, it's still got a discussion.
Oh.
I can't. I hate to say, I still got this issue with the water technician. Past employee, now another employee, that's the same thing.
Now, he's a new employee.
So, old employee retired, now it's a new employee, same job description and all that, same. I still have an issue with that, and I haven't heard any clarification from anybody on that.
Did you want to pull that one out of the group and vote on it separately, John?
What do the rest of you think?
Water commission's in charge of their committee, in charge of their employees.
But we're approving.
I understand that.
I mean, I personally would abstain from that at, at least, and I'm just worried about the liability for the town.
Has there been any discussion on liability relative to this, for any kind of conflicts?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I've been privy to, rather.
So, he's on the, is he on the?
He retired from the town, as I understand it, then they brought him back to work again, and I know there's limitations. If you retire at 80%, you can come back to work for 20%, you know, and all that, but this was a position created for him. I just want to make sure everything is been checked out, I guess is the best way to put it.
So, entertain a motion to accept all the other, and put this one on hold for clarification.
We have a motion in a second.
We already have a motion.
All right, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah.
I'll withdraw my motion. Want to withdraw a second?
I'll withdraw the second.
All right. Do I entertain a motion for all the positions except the water technician? Be accepted?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was, what was that second motion? I'm sorry, I was typing the first motion.
We withdrew the first motion, the second motion was to accept all the personnel.
Except water technician.
Except the water technician.
Okay.
The water technician is standing for further clarification.
Yeah, I mean, it's my point of view, if the water commission can come up with something that says it's been verified now that, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I don't mind holding it off, it doesn't bother me.
That's fine.
We don't have a contract with East Hampton Media?
I'm only on.
Personnel requisition forms. Did you jump ahead on me?
All right, personnel requisition forms. We have two personnel requisition forms for Treasurer Collector Clerk and Assistant Treasurer Clerk. Where are these forms, Heather?
They're in that red folder again, Charlie. It's all in the red folder.
It's all in the red folder, my goodness. I can see that every time I open it.
I'm happy to modify the process, it's just easier than passing everything down to Jackie.
No, no, I understa, trust me, I'm just new at this and trying to make sure that we're not missing anything.
Understood.
You know? So, this is basically to advertise two new positions?
It's to advertise for the Treasurer Collector Clerk position and the Assistant Treasurer Collector position, yes. Not, not new positions. There are the existing positions, just new individuals for those positions.
Right, so the positions have been approved by finance personnel, they all exist, so we've approved to post the positions?
Is this for posting or hiring somebody into them?
This is for posting, all the informations in those packets that Charlie has, and they're already signed off on. I think these ones are addressed by the accountant.
That's fine.
Accountant and personnel. I don't know if FinCom signs on these ones.
Okay, so paperwork's on order, I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, the contract for East Hampton Media?
So, this I just put on there because Kathy asked me to give it to you guys to review, but we can get into it more next meeting. It's not really going to become relevant to modify until we get to the charter contract piece. It's already in place, and we're good.
And just to know the charter contract is in negotiations, but I can see it's a few months out before we finally get something that we can put in front of everybody.
Okay.
So, okay? So, pass over that for now, and signing the warrants.
So, in that red folder, you have the sheet of paper, that's the last sheet from the.
It's sitting here now?
It should be the, no, no, the annual town meeting warrant is the article or the item. Yes, yes.
This thing?
Yes.
It's that, not this.
Yes. I labeled it, I put a sticky on it.
All right, you need a signature on this? We've already voted it.
I need everyone's signature on that piece, so what we generally do is, when I print the warrant, I always leave an intentionally left blank page in case I have to modify anything before it.
This is a pair.
Because we've done this before, and it's been multiple prints.
Ladies first.
It's the articles that we did. Okay. She just wants a signature page.
She just wants our signatures, and she can go shopping.
Was there, was there a vote on that, Charlie?
Well, the vote was earlier, for the entire, so.
Would you mind if I vote for the whole?
For signing the warrant, because you did vote to approve the articles and for the budget, but not to necessarily sign.
All right, I entertain a motion that we sign the warrant for the annual town meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Did you say no, Jeff?
Jim said no. No, four to zero, four to. We're going to trap Jim in a minute, just a question when he's not looking.
He's too sharp though.
He's picking up.
When we get to it.
Go get him.
Okay. There's the three of them listed, but you have. So, now we are on payroll bill warrants. Is he going to read them?
Oh, my God.
All right.
You ready?
I'm ready.
So, warrant, PD 16-43.
Mm-hmm. Dated. Read them all, yeah.
PD 16-43A dated 4/21/2016, 148,114 cents. P 1645 dated 5/5/2016, the amount 241,207.51. That's all three.
Can usually make a motion to accept them.
I make a motion to accept as read.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Provo Minutes, April 19, 2016. Have we had time to review that? Well, I have, so. Motion to accept the minutes of April 19, that's one.
I was like, I don't see it.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Good move.
You don't have to be there.
Three to one abstention. Motion carries. Calendar announcement, the board of selectmen meeting will be May 17, possibly the 31st. Question for the board members, are you interested in carrying on Tuesday night meetings? Because frankly, I would prefer a Thursday night meeting.
Oh, Thursday's not good.
Well, something to think about. Annual town meeting is May 17.
Do we get a vote on another day?
Think about it.
I said, think about it. Our next meeting's May 17, it's town meeting.
What about a Wednesday or something? It's just Tuesday, Thursday in play, or, that's what I was asking?
No, all days are in play. Personally, Mondays and Tuesdays are the days that I am personally bombarded with requests in other meetings.
So, you think Wednesday's a better night?
Wednesday's a better night for me.
Yeah, Wednesday's okay, Thursday's bad.
Wednesday.
You go to Wednesdays?
You do.
I go to the gym on Wednesday.
Oh, geez, well, good. Too much pizza.
How do you think?
Do you keep the pizza under control, right?
You cut that out, you can, you can, Wednesday's off.
Tuesday or Thursday's better for me, but I mean, it's doable if I need it to.
All right, let's tentatively, I mean, we'll meet on the 17th for town meeting, and we'll talk about this and see where we go.
Okay.
So, 17th. There's going to be, obviously, town meeting May 17. Public Information Center session on the stretch code is May 12 at 5:30 Town Hall. And Cook and County Road Project is May 12, 7:00 PM, again, here in this room. Do we need executive session tonight? I am going to do a roll call on executive session.
Cesar.
Wait a minute.
You've got to read, yeah.
Master Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 3, and we will not be returning to open session. Motion to enter executive session, roll call, vote.
Do you need to say why? I mean, you gave, do you have to conduct that?
This is going to be to conduct a strategy session, preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, police chief.
And fire chief.
And fire chief.
Okay. Martin, aye?
Libri, aye.
Kineke, aye?
Cesar.
Very good. Meeting's closed.